Mike's not on, is it?
Testing, testing, yes.
Could we please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Okay, well, thank you, thank you for all coming. I'd like to open this, open the board meeting. The, uh, we're gonna change the script just a little bit, only because we've got a very exciting showcase to, uh, to review. Uh, Warren Early Childhood Center, Ann Marie. Oh, how about that?
My name is actually Jerry Jellyfish. Hi, I'm Jerry Jellyfish. Who's this? Yep, this is Nigel Night Owl. So we're sorry, Ann Marie and Lindsay cannot be here tonight, but they are leaving this presentation to the professionals. So here we go, we've got some friends in the audience who are getting close to bedtime. So we are going to cruise on through. Okay, so we have adopted, um, a new literacy program at the Early Childhood Center, and it is called Zoo Phonics. So our trip to the zoo began in April of 2021. The Warren Arts and Education Foundation, I reached out to them because I was interested in trying to find a new literacy program. Given the district's efforts to embrace ba- brain-based literacy, I wanted to lay that foundation at the Early Childhood Center. So we were preparing children in the same way as they would walk into when they go to an elementary school in Warren Township. So after we did some research, we landed on Zoo Phonics. And, uh, in April 2021, WAIF supported that with a grant, and so all of our classrooms got the curriculum. And for the rest of that school year, we began to learn it, teachers began to learn it, and we didn't make them dress in costume yet. Uh, that's, that was later down the road. But then the following school year in '21, '22, we, we went into full implementation, where all the teachers were rolling out the letters and following the curriculum as they learned it, as they were teaching it to children, they were learning it as well. And then, uh, last year, '22, '23, we went to a school-wide approach. So we were all learning the same letter at the same time, which was really beneficial because then we can talk to children about it in the hallway and in the office and everywhere they run into a grown-up, um, we can talk about the, the letter sounds and the zoo animals that they're learning for that week. So our next, uh, goal for this school year is we're looking at trying to align our quarterly assessments and progress reports to that language. We've decided we really like this program, we're seeing good responses from the children. They shouted my name when I walked in, they knew who Lindsay was, so they're, they've gotten really familiar with it. So now we want to make sure that all of our language and everything we're doing embraces this program. So this is just a little bit of an overview about Zoo Phonics, and then we're gonna bring it to life for you here in a little bit. All of the letters are shaped with an animal, and every animal has a sound, and it's a full multisensory experience. So children are learning body signals while they're seeing the shape of the letter through the animal. Um, so it's, their bodies are moving, their brains are working, and it's starting to cement it in there because we've got them saying the letter sound, doing the body signal, and then when you throw in some music and some teachers acting goofy, you really get them, um, engaged and they remember. So we do teach, um, the sounds before the letters, um, same as brain-based literacy shows us. And then we teach lowercase first, which is really a shift for early childhood. Once upon a time, um, it used to be that capital letters were easier to form, um, when children were writing, so that's what we taught first. And now we've switched gears because, um, what we see in print is lowercase letters more often than capital letters. So we want children to be familiar with those lowercase letters first because that's what they're gonna see in print. So when we look at some ways that we've been able to, um, meet this goal of, of engaging families and the community and our staff, um, last year we shifted our literacy night to It's a Zoo at ECC. And luckily for the teachers, I bought every animal costume, A to Z, and they get to wear them during literacy night and engage with families and children, and I know they love it, right, Mrs. Cadwell? They love it. Um, so it's really fun, it's a great way to make sure families are learning about our curriculum. It's in the teacher's weekly newsletter, they let families know, hey, this is, this is our letter animal this week. And so hopefully children are teaching parents at home. We know they can because, trust me, they know, they, they know these letter sounds. And then last year, we had teachers, um, record videos of teaching the letters. Um, just every teacher recorded a couple of videos, and our hope is we can get a YouTube channel going so families can access that and read alouds and different things, um, whenever they'd like. So this year now, we're following the district's lead on transitioning some of this to writing as well. So before we get into the writing portion, here are just some fun pictures, um, of our very happy staff wearing animal costumes. They have no idea I'm showing this tonight, so they're gonna be real excited. The middle picture is one of our family nights, we have some siblings engaging in our activities. Here's our whole staff, see, they're happy. And then again, this is literacy night where our staff are dressed in costumes and participating in different activities, um, based on the Zoo Phonics curriculum with teachers. So I'm gonna circle back now and talk a little bit about the writing piece, and you guys from ECC are being so patient, it is almost your turn, I promise. So as the district has, has been focusing on writing, we, again, wanted to follow suit, but writing, uh, at the preschool level is really different. We don't wanna jump right to, you know, writing letters and tracing letters and, and forcing them to do things they're not ready for. So I love this x-ray of the hands because on the left is, you know, a three or four-year-old hand, and on the right is a seven-year-old hand. So look at those chunky little, the chunky little hand on the left, the bones and the joints aren't even fully formed, just, so they're just not ready. And I feel like in the past, we've rushed children to write. The thing we get asked the most, I think, from families is, when are they gonna learn to write their name? And I'm like, when they're ready. I mean, they'll show us when they're ready, and it's just not something we can force because their hands just aren't strong enough. So this is what writing looks like for us, we build hand strength, we do activities that are, uh, building fine motor strength, we're learning how to hold writing utensils, we're exploring with lots of different kinds of writing utensils, um, we're encouraging children at the writing center to make marks independently on paper, and they're scribbling, they're drawing, and then you start to see some things that start to mimic what letters look like. So that is, uh, how we're moving forward with writing. And so in order to tie that in to the Zoo Phonics curriculum, um, we've created some of these, um, letter mats for teachers to have. And what children are doing until they're ready to show us that they can write is they're building letters, um, with puzzle pieces, and they can make every letter with a little line, little curve, or a big line, big curve, and that combination of those four pieces can make every letter. So we asked them to make alley alligator, ah, ah, and they are able to make that with the wood pieces, and then it starts to correlate, um, and make that connection for them. So that is kind of where we are with that piece. So, um, before we have our special guests come up to the front with us, I do wanna show you some video of children who are modeling their sounds for you. I don't know what this will do for the volume, but we'll see. You'll notice they're not saying the letter sounds, or they're not saying the letter names.
Can you show me Missy Mouse? Go. Good. Go ahead, show me Pewee Penguin.
So I feel like literacy has really come alive the past couple of years, and we could not have done it without the Arts and Education Foundation. So we are so, so appreciative of their supporting me in this costly little initiative for all of our classrooms. And now I want our special guests to come up. Do you guys wanna come up here with me? We're gonna show them our letter names. Oh, you guys are being so great! I love it, I know. Do you know what? We don't even have to look back there, those guys, we're gonna look up here. Are you guys ready? I'm gonna start it for you, you need to spread out so you don't hit your friends. Spread out a little bit, oh, good job Teddy, you have to watch, look here though. All right, are you guys ready? I can't wait. Kent, do you wanna join us for this? All right, by the time Kent was done helping us set up, he knew the whole song and all the letter signals.
Who let the letters out?
Who, 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 who?
Who let the letters out?
Who, 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 who?
Who let the letters out?
Who, 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 who?
At the zoo, the party was bumpin'. With the I.O., all the letters having a ball. With the I.O., then I hear footsteps running. With the I.O., letters, where'd they all go?
Who let the A out?
Ah, 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 ah.
Who let the B out?
Bu, 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 bu.
Who let the C out?
K, 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 k.
Who let the D out?
Du, 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 du.
Who let the E out?
Eh, 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 eh.
Who let the F out? Who let the G out?
Gu, 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 gu.
Get back A, B, C, D, E, F, where's G? Who let the H out?
Ha, 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 ha.
Who let the I out?
Eh, 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 eh.
Who let the J out?
J, 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 j.
Who let the K out?
K, 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 k.
Who let the L out?
O, 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 o.
Who let the M out?
M, 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 m.
Who let the N out?
N, 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 n.
Get back H, I, J, K, L, M, where's N? Who let the O out?
Ah, 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 ah.
Who let the P out?
P, 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 p.
Who let the Q out?
Q, 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 q.
Who let the R out?
R, 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 r.
Who let the S out?
S, 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 s.
Who let the T out?
T, 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 t.
Get back O, P, Q, R, S, where's T? Who let the U out?
Uh, 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 uh.
Who let the V out?
V, 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 v.
Who let the W out?
W, 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 w.
Who let the X out?
X, 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 x.
Who let the Y out?
Y, 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 y.
Who let the V out?
V, 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 v.
Get back U, V, W, X, Y, Z.
My gosh, you guys are really good! Good job, okay. Do you wanna get your bell bells? Do you wanna lift this way? This is too scary, you can just look at the back. I think you can do it, look at her. Okay, do you have your jingle bells? Okay, here we go, you guys. Here we go. All right, parents of these fabulous superstars, we're gonna record a teeny tiny little video when we go out into the lobby, so if you guys wanna head that direction, oh, you want us to do a walkthrough? Okay, we'll do it. Yes. Oh, they're all at school. Okay, here, let's go this way. Do you wanna go to the back? You guys, we're gonna have a parade, are you ready? We're gonna follow, follow. All these grown-ups wanna tell you how awesome you are. Okay. Okay. All right, I'm sorry if you ever have to follow.
Oh, that was great. That was very, very nice. That was pretty good. That was pretty good. That was very nice. Very, very, very nice. Okay, moving right along. The next item on the agenda is, of course, the superintendent's report. Dr. Hanson?
Good evening, Mr. Dorsey, members of the board. Now, I'm glad that I go before the school showcases in the future. That was wonderful. I'm going to be very brief and short tonight. Couple activities there from the last month. One that I would like to highlight is our Rotary. This is one of our flagship projects, the Indianapolis East Rotary, partners with the school district and partners with Meyer. And we provide brand-new shoes for 80 of our middle school students and our Renaissance students. We bring them to Meyer and allow them to pick those out, and it's always a great experience. We all know what it feels like to get new shoes, and to see that feeling for our kids is awesome. I want to give a shout out to all of our folks that were involved in the Thanksgiving outreach at Lakeside, Liberty Park, and at MRC, Ms. Triplett, and your elves for the biggest toy giveaway. I was one of those elves. But outstanding outreach this past weekend. I'll let her kind of share some of the details in her report. Board, we are continuing our work with the revision of our Journey of a Graduate. We'll be working on narrowing that down to three visuals. We'll bring that to our group here in January. I want to give a warm, well, shout out to Laura Buckwright and Allison Woods. We were the recipient of one of five statewide family engagement grants. It's a five-year grant worth a half a million dollars. So we're very excited for that. And before I turn it over to Ms. Williams, I just want to wish everyone a joyful Christmas holiday season and a Happy New Year. I appreciate each of you. Ms. Williams?
I will be very brief. First of all, Merry Christmas to everyone and Happy New Year. So, you know, for all of you that might leave before I get a chance to make comments. But I would like to recognize two people that have given great support to our board. James Taylor, would you come forward, please? Let's give James a hand. He has worked so hard on supporting us, and we just want to say thank you as superintendent and board. And the next person is LaShana. LaShana has worked so hard. Raise your hand, LaShana. Oops, there goes my little hat. We want to say thank you for all of your support. And this comes from the superintendent and the board.
You're welcome.
Get in trouble together, Ms. Williams.
That was very good. Very good. Good to recognize the folks who are doing real good stuff. There's no question about that. Can't miss out on those opportunities, absolutely. Next on the agenda are two spotlights presented by Brian Simkin, followed by Dr. Hanson.
Wait for it. There we go. President Dorsey, Dr. Hanson, members of the board, Warren community, it's my pleasure to once again carry on our December tradition of recognizing our loyal support staff employees who have worked here loyally for 20 or more consecutive years. And so again, as part of that, they will receive on the December 29th paycheck a nice $350 bonus as a token of our appreciation. And so, yeah. They are listed here publicly. And publicly, on behalf of district administration, I want to thank them. There is many of the names we know. You don't work anywhere, commit anywhere for 20-plus years without showing some loyalty, which means that even on the days when you maybe didn't feel like coming into work, you got the job done. These are folks that know their job well, and they are extremely dependable and reliable. And they come from all walks of life, and many of them represent just about every type of position and location in the district. As we know, many of our support staff overwhelmingly live in the community. And so often, it's double loyalty. Loyalty to the mission of what we do here at the district, but also their kids attend our schools and so on and so forth. So they're members of the community. So we really, really appreciate all the years of loyal service. And so it's a pleasure to recognize them publicly. And as I always see in HR often, there truly are no ordinary people. It's amazing what people do, even without expecting immediate payoffs, although the paychecks are nice to you, and the bonuses. So with that, I just want to say thank you. And we are so proud to be able to publicly recognize you. So thank you. President Dorsey, members of the board, members of our community tonight, it's my pleasure, another tradition we have here in Warren Township, is to recognize the outgoing school board president. So Mr. Dorsey, if you could join me at the podium? Mr. Dorsey, on behalf of the school board and myself, I just want to thank you for your leadership this past year. As you know, we successfully completed the referendum. Not an easy task to do, but under your leadership, we were able to be successful with that. One thing that I will miss and that I've enjoyed this year is our collaboration. Your consistent raising the bar. We call it the gold standard. And you were constantly pushing us as a team, us as a district, of how do we represent the W the best way we can. I will miss our morning collaborations, but I look forward to continuing to work with you. And on behalf of the board, on behalf of our district, I'd like to recognize you with this plaque, "Presented to Mr. Howard Dorsey Jr., Board of Education President, January to December 2023, for the Metropolitan School District of Warren Township, in appreciation of your distinguished leadership and service." Thank you, sir.
I'm not going to talk about the reward. It was super. I really had a wonderful time. I enjoyed what we all did. We've got a super crew, board members. The staff has been outstanding. The rest of the administration has just been wonderful. There's just so many pluses that I could give to a lot of people who have done a lot of good work in our district. And just excited to be and honored to be a part of this august body of people who are moving this district to success and excellence. So anyway, that's all I wanted to say in reference to that. The next item we've got on the agenda is to recognize our Student Council, Warren Central representative. Kavay, if you could come on up here? Now, I've got some prepared words because, see, I kind of like lose my mind when I start talking off the cuff, and I'm liable to say anything. So let me just say that Kavay has reports that she plans on following graduation to take on a gap year while still doing classes at Ivy Tech. Now, I've heard of gap years, and I know what people do and why they do that. And you know, it's very, very common for students to take off a year and do some other things. They've been fighting that battle for 12 years. And when they're good students, that means they study hard, they put in the work, and they want to be successful, and so they put that extra in there. Well, that takes a lot of us. I don't care who you are, whether you're a student or whether you're, you know, an adult that's trying to, you know, do some really successful stuff. You got to put in the work, and that's exhausting, very stressful. And I don't know about you guys, but I was having difficulty learning how to tie my shoes when I was in high school. And these students nowadays are just such super, super people. And she is, of course, a prime example of that. So taking off a gap year is not a bad thing. Matter of fact, it's a very common thing. And it allows folks to get a, how do you say, reflect on their lives and where they're going to go, make really choice clearly thought-out decisions on where they want to move forward. And sometimes they travel abroad. Sometimes they'll get a job to say, hey, you know, I just want to tone it down a little bit. I even know young men who will join the military for a few years just to get a little discipline thing going and come back into the civilian world and then pursue the career that they're really after. So it's really a good thing, and I think it's a smart thing, and congratulations on doing that. Her goal will be then to attend a four-year program to pursue a degree in teaching. See, she's already starting out already. She's getting ready right now. She is undecided on that grade level or the content area. She has really enjoyed her time as a board student representative and was excited to see that her feedback she gave was taken seriously. And we do take those items seriously, and we took hers. For example, she loved that when she expressed concern regarding the availability of food carts that we, that she was able to see an immediate change. We listened to what she had to say, looked into it, investigated, and said, hey, let's do this. Let's do this. She's still actively serving as a member of the Student Council, active works and participates on the Warren Central High School Wake Up Warren Show and loves serving in a leadership capacity wherever needed here at the high school. Now, she's brought a vibrance to the board meetings with her enthusiasm and energy. She showed commitment to serve as student leader, and her gained experience will position her to serve in the college setting as she pursues her goal to teach. I'm convinced she will push, guide her students to new heights. She has a lot in the tank, and she will cruise to continue her excellence. I'm convinced of it. So without any further ado, let me go ahead and read the plaque to you and tell you what we're giving her. Kavay King, 2023 Student Representative, Board of Education, in appreciation of your service to the MSD Warren Township Board of Education, December 20, 2023. Journey of a graduate. Citizenship, collaboration, content knowledge, communication, resilience, and critical thinking. Congratulations.
Good evening. I hope all is well. To start off, I want to thank you all for letting me be the spokesperson for the student body and serve as student representative of Warren Central High School. Being Student Council President has taught me a great number of skills that I will take with me into future endeavors. I also want to thank the board for helping me increase student trust by effectively listening to their concerns, likes, things they want to see, et cetera. For example, at the August board meeting, I brought up the students' concerns about the placement of breakfast carts. Very soon after that meeting, the concern was resolved. I even contacted the student who brought this concern to my attention, and they said the placements were much better. Additionally, I would like to thank the principal of Warren Central High School, Mrs. Taylor, for everything she has helped accomplish. As I'm sure most of you know, this year we brought back pep rallies. I discussed the pep rally idea with Ms. Taylor and later brought it to the board. And a few months later, we had our first pep rally in about three years. This student center activity boosted the morale of students. With that being said, I'm really happy to be a part of a school district that genuinely listens to students. On that topic, the students would love a student-accessible microwave. This would give students... This would give students the option to bring lunch from home and warm it up, and an accessible microwave would really accommodate students with allergies. Moving on, I want to give everyone an insight on things happening at Warren Central. This past Friday, our boys' basketball team competed against our Westside Ravens Ben Davis and was able to bring home the win with a final score of 65 to 60. Additionally, our first signing night did happen last night with multiple Warren Central athletes signing to their future college. Lastly, our annual Black and Gold Pageant also took place last Friday. It was a great event with Lenaya Chaney winning Miss Black and Gold and Kevin Tran winning Mister Black and Gold. With all that being said, again, I want to thank you all for letting me represent the student body. Additionally, I want to thank the Student Council body for electing me to be their president. I enjoy my time serving, and I look forward to you all meeting the next Student Council president. Have a great night.
Kavay, I have to say, I've never heard of a student taking a gap year and taking classes during that gap year. So I applaud you.
And I would like to say she has been a great advocate for the students. Each time she comes, she's like, okay, we need this. And she has really brought about a change, and I congratulate you for that. Thank you.
And as our last meeting with you, I would just like to say thank you for taking on the hard topics and not being afraid to present it in front of everyone with confidence. And we knew you meant business, and your voice was very powerful. So we had no choice but to listen. Good luck.
Very good. Moving right along, any board correspondents? Okay, how about green cards? Anything?
No, there are neither.
Okay. Well, next on the agenda is a consent agenda. And that includes approval of minutes, financial report for payroll claim, financial report for claim register, and electronic payments, financial report for a year-to-date summary of fund balances, a human resources report, permission to accept gifts and grants, change orders, and use of school property. Could I get someone to move to accept the consent agenda?
I still move.
I will second.
Any discussion? Who seconded? Did somebody second? Who was the second? Okay.
It doesn't matter whoever said it first.
Gloria.
Okay, great.
Okay, okay. Any discussion? Okay. All in favor, say aye. Well, okay, I'll tell you what. What we'll do is, well, we'll take the vote. Well, we, okay, I'll tell you what, what we'll do is we'll, we'll, I'll take, we'll take the vote. The motion carries. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is um, field trips. Can I get someone to move?
I second.
I second.
So who do we have? We had, who, who moved? Okay, Terry moves, motion moved and uh, okay, LaShana. Any discussion? All in favors, correction. Let's take the vote. Okay, the motion carries. Next item on the agenda, Marcus will introduce.
Thank you President Dorsey, Dr. Hanson, members of the board and to our Warren community. I'm excited tonight to introduce our new garage supervisor, but before I do that, we have a lot of people here from Porter, from the operations side. Can you guys stand up and, and what? Stand up so they can see you. Here to support. We appreciate you, especially this time of year when it gets real cold. So um, keep up the good work. Uh, this is a, a special introduction. Uh, this is a um, a Warren family. Mom and dad, are you here tonight? Where's, I heard mom and dad are here. We have two Warren Central grads here, back here tonight. Now, keep, keep standing please, because we, we need to talk. Because as a social studies teacher, a long, long time ago, I had Josh in class, right? Saying I'm still here to tell the stories, I had Josh. And then your daughter Emily, who's getting married next month. Uh, she is back here in Warren Township as a teacher at the high school and she used to work with us when she was in college in the athletic department. So we know Emily very well and glad she came back here. And then last but not least, your son Austin is here tonight to be introduced as our new garage supervisor. So at this time, Austin Felton. So as you could tell, this is a Warren family affair. So we want to welcome Austin up here to say a few things. Yeah, we left that part out, didn't we?
How's everybody doing tonight? Uh, I just want to say thank you guys. I appreciate it. I've been given the opportunity to take over the, the supervisor at, uh, for the bus garage. I've been here six years. Um, this is something that I've always kind of wanted to look forward to. Um, I'm excited for the new adventure. It's going to be a learning curve, but I'm ready to take it on and I got a good team behind me to, to help with all the areas that I need help in. So I appreciate it.
Can we shake your hand?
Okay, the next agenda item is the um, six-month update on ESER. Ryan Russell.
President Dorsey, Dr. Hanson, members of the board. Tonight, providing a standard overview, a six-month overview of ESER-related balances. Uh, as you may recall, we are in our final of our federal stimulus COVID relief stimulus money and that is lovingly referred to as ESER III. No significant changes to, to report tonight. As you can see, uh, we are steadily paying down the balances for the allocated specific interventions and opportunities that we had always planned on. Uh, we haven't made any changes in the last six months for that. You can see the remaining balances are starting to work their way down. That being said, the vast majority, with the exception of uh, the technology and HVAC enhancements which are on schedule to be completed. And what that means is we're not going to give any money back to the federal government. We're going to spend it all. But the rest of the remaining balances under all the other components, so specifically the two and a half million dollars uh, still associated to paying salaries for the next year for those described positions and the same thing specific to the, the last category there. A lot of that, which just so happens to be, uh, you know, I know tonight, we're actually here in a few minutes, we're gonna showcase Morehead Community Resource Center. And just as a reminder, that was lifted off the ground with the support of ESER and we're still utilizing ESER funding to pay staffing salaries there and provide some of the support uh, to the physical location as well. Uh, this is a statutory requirement or a federal requirement that we provide a six-month update in a public form. Uh, we, the way we allow for public comment is on our website. Uh, this presentation is posted and uh, we will leave comments open to the public until Friday, December 23rd. Uh, any public comments made via the forum there, uh, I will bring to you guys or, or simply let you guys know what those were. Uh, and you will see me again, well, later tonight. However, you'll see me again about ESER in June of 2024 uh, for the final update of the um, ESER adventure. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Indiana's 26, welcome back. Youth Service bureaus work to provide opportunities and resources to at-risk youth and their families. Last year, Indiana's 26 agencies provided more than 240,000 services to 65 counties. Each month, we're going to recognize these agencies for their commitment and effort. So right now, we want to meet Reach for Youth and Morehead Community Center.
We're an agency that was started in 1974 by a group of parents who had children that were starting to get into trouble and they needed some mental health services.
So instead of providing services that were very successful in getting them into school again, we wanted to do something that would really help reduce their likelihood of getting back into trouble. And one of those programs is called Reach.
We've had a situation where we've had a young man that vandalized a restroom in, in one of our schools. You would always think that you would come down on that student and say, hey, this is not acceptable. But we kind of gave him the opportunity to um, advance his craft. So instead of, you know, being punitive and telling him, hey, you're suspended, expelled from school, we gave him the opportunity to teach.
Morehead is an idea that was born out of necessity. We consider ourselves like a live 211. It's an oasis of hope. And what I mean by that is you come for one thing and you may get something else.
All of our youth are one caring adults away from reaching their potential. So being able to support them in that and knowing that there's going to be barriers, there's going to be challenges they're all going to experience. And we want to come alongside to support them in removing those barriers and reaching their full potential.
When I was younger, my mentor invested in me. So I think, you know, through my faith in God and the people that he's allowed me to be around, I'm charged. And I get recharged every time I get to work with a family or a young person um, who accepts the program, who uh, takes the help. Who kind of changes their mindset about their life.
What families are really looking for is someone to listen and not to respond. So talking to our families and seeing what their true needs, listening to their desires and um, what they really want to take in from a community has helped us build these new programs.
I think it's heartwarming for me to be able to say, I've made an impact in their child's life. I've made an impact in that student's life.
Communication is key. I had a young girl, she was a fighter. So she wasn't in school long enough to know that she was really, really a bright kid. So she took a test and she brought it up and whispered and said, you gave me the wrong grade. And I was like, oh, let me see your paper. It was an A. She couldn't believe she had actually received an A. And from there, the sky was the limit.
What they are gaining from the clinicians here, from the trainers here, from the staff here, is a sense that you matter. And that they carry with them and that's what they carry into their future and that's what the hope is.
There is an extreme shortage of mental health therapists currently. And so it is um, an event that we have to, as a nation, look at. How can we encourage more people to go into this profession?
Here we have hope to have like a, just a normal life. You'll, you'll be able to have a job, to work on like a supply for your, support your family, have a place to live, just the basic, the simple things of life that a lot of people takes for granted.
I often say to the people that we're working with, you could be any place in the world today, but you're here with us. And for that, that's a good thing and we're gonna help you.
And we look forward to hearing about more great youth organizations next month.
Hey, Mr. Nick, I got another order of ultimate watchbooks for you. It looks a little...
To Dr. Hanson, our school board member, I'm gonna call everybody's name out. Gloria's not here. She walked out during my presentation. I was gonna stop her and tell her to get back here, but I want to call your names out. Gloria Williams, Kevin Humphries, Julie French, Howard Dorsey, our superintendent, Dr. Tim Hanson, LaShana Triplett, Terry Amos, and Rachel Burke. All of the work that we do starts with you. If we did not have a school board that was compassionate, caring and loving, we cannot accomplish the things that we accomplish in Warren Township. And for that, I want to thank you and let's give our school board members a round of applause. I'm gonna take, take this opportunity to have some people in the community to give a few testimonies. They will be brief but brilliant, like I always say. And, but I do want them to do that because I want you to see the people who have come to us to give us their knowledge, their time and their talent. So I don't have an order for this. I'm gonna call a few people up. The first person I'm gonna call up is Judge Gaither. Judge Gaither, come on up.
Good evening, everyone and to the board and Dr. Hanson and um, President Dorsey. I just want to say, uh, again, my name is Jeffrey Gaither. I'm a judge in, in Family Division here. Uh, the presiding judge of, of Court Nine. And uh, I have partnered with James Taylor and um, LaShana Triplett and, and, and many others for a long time. And I have been to a number of school board meetings, but only at Warren. I haven't been to Franklin or Center or Washington. And that's because of the board at Warren and everyone else, you're doing things that other townships are not doing. And um, uh, I was formerly at Juvenile Court. So we have partnered with Morehead and with some of our other community partners are here, Inner Beauty and New Boy, uh, Brandon with True Colors and uh, my right hand, uh, who's now with Morehead because Mr. Taylor stole her. That's Regina Murray. And uh, and, and others. And I, and I just want to say that I'm gonna steal James's line because he had a line that, that I steal. And it's called, we, we find more ways to support children and families rather than report. And our numbers in our, in our juvenile detention um, uh, caseload and in, in the children in front of me have gone down. And uh, specifically, they've gone down here in Warren because you guys have made a collective effort to work together and collaborate to ensure that you use everything possible for the children uh, get to me. And uh, and I just want to say this, one, one other thing. I was a, LaShana asked me to be a Santa Claus at her toy giveaway on Saturday and, and I did. Uh, but I was struck because there was um, there was a girl, uh, she was in the sixth grade. She came to me and I'm, you know, I'm doing my Santa thing and, and, and I asked, you know, what's your name and where do you go to school? And what kind of grades do you make? And she, she told me your name and she told me the school. I forgot the school. And she said she made straight A's. Now, her mother was there getting ready to take a picture and, and her mother screamed at her, you don't make straight A's. And, and she didn't. And, and, and mother said, you don't even know how to read. And so I, I was handing out uh, cookies for the kids and, and when they would tell me what they want. And I asked her to read the package and she could not read. Uh, she was making the sounds, but she could not read the letters. It said double chocolate uh, cookie. She could say the D words and it's, and, and whatnot. So we sat there, I took the time, we sat there and sounded out the words. So eventually she was able to read the package. But I was struck by the fact that she's in the sixth grade and cannot read. And that meant that she couldn't read in the fifth grade, she couldn't read in the fourth grade, she couldn't read in the third and second and so forth. But yet she was still passing through. And I'm, I'm, now, I was, at that time, I'm dressed as Santa, so I was just an extreme, you know, I'm just giving, I gave mama an extreme stank eye because I'm just saying, you know, it takes about 20 minutes a night uh, in order to help a child learn how to read. And I wondered why mama didn't take that time. And then it came to me later, maybe mama couldn't read. So I was just, I was just, uh, I'm gonna wrap this up. So I was just glad to see that we started out the presentation with the Zouphonics. And uh, because after all, what's the point of doing everything we do if our babies can't read? So uh, so I'm, I'm supportive of everything that Zouphonics is about. I'm especially, especially supportive of what James Taylor and the, and the board and Mrs. Fletcher and everybody else, what they're all about as we move forward collectively to help children and families in this community. Thank you very much.
Hi, I am attorney Kiki Gaither, his wife. Oftentimes I have to pull his coattails, but the, the little girl was really good at math. And I don't know enough, you know, why that doesn't match up. So I would implore, you know, you guys help us to be able to help the community because if Mr. Taylor, Regina, LaShana, or anybody asks us to help youth, well, that was Mrs. Santa Claus passing out toys, but we will be there because we believe in helping people. Because when they come to me, they're really messed up. I do family law, divorces, custody, child support and reading. Uh, and it's so important when we get the information we need from the schools to present to the courts, how this particular child is doing with this family and whether the children are arriving late to school, they don't get picked up. And I know that the, you know, the, the schools, and I'm 30 seconds out, the schools will not make a recommendation, nor should they make a recommendation. But all the information that you put into the school records, they really help the courts make a really good decision. So thank you for everything.
Real quick, could you shake their hands?
I have to come.
Real quick, Fletcher, can you bring those wonderful two young men up? And Ms. Sutton, if you're in the audience, can you come up? And then I want to do a roll call of providers. This part is important to me because it, it's a testimony of our kids and I'm gonna have Mr. Fletcher um, introduce the young men.
Hello, once again, I'm Fletcher Triplett with MLT. I have two special young women, men with me tonight, Tayshaun Lombardi and Dwayne Proctor. me tonight, Tayshawn Lombardi and Dwayne Proctor. You guys tell your story.
Sorry, I got to pull up this speech I wrote. How's everybody doing tonight? Good. So my name is Tayshawn Lombardi. And before I even knew about the Triplets, I was getting suspended and expelled from every school like I was stepping foot in, okay? And my problem was I had nobody to steer me in the right direction, nobody to help me and like tell me that's right, that's wrong. And I was on the verge, I remember, I was getting expelled from, I almost got expelled from Riverside. And I was on the verge of getting kicked out of my house because I wasn't able to go to school and they weren't like, I had to go to school. And after about that time, that's when I heard about the Triplets and the program that they had. And I was really like hesitant at first to like get out of my comfort zone and start a new life. But once I met Mr. Fletcher and realized I didn't have to live the way I was living and could better my life the way, but I just had to make that choice. And I really, I wanted to make the change and decided to make the steps. But it really took a long, long time for me to realize that it wasn't nobody that was going to be there for me and like help me. I had to do it myself. It was really, it was really more of the surroundings I was in that I wasn't able to like change and like make the choices by myself. But, sorry. But I couldn't, like I wasn't able to, I couldn't do it without Fletch and Ms. LaShawna. I wasn't able to really like live on my own and do the right things without somebody guiding me. But now that, once I made the change and really believed that MLT could help me, it really became more of a home than another company that DCS decided to put me into. But once I learned, what I learned from Trip over these years was really being able to be trustworthy, respectful, and independent person. But they really taught me how to like right from my wrongs and give me all the tools that I needed to live right. But it was only up to me to make that change. And yeah, this program has really motivated me into the person I am today.
How y'all doing this afternoon? My name is Dwayne Proctor. I've been in, I've been in MLT for about six years now. And I first learned about MLT was because I got, was in this room, actually. I was in this room because I had got kicked out of Raymond Park in Renaissance. And basically, and so basically, Warren, all y'all, mostly all in this room, y'all tried to give me chances and after chance. And so y'all introduced me to MLT. And with y'all giving me that chance, it really like helped me make a difference over time. I didn't do it over, I didn't do it instantly. I had made a change like over time. With being with MLT, I done learned a lot. One of the main things that I live by, or one of the main things that I hear with being with MLT is Trip, which is being trustworthy, respectful, and an independent person. And what, like, what comes with that, like trustworthy, they got to be able to trust us to take us out, be in their car, anything like that, being respectful. Me giving them respect and they giving us respect. It works two ways. And being independent, knowing like after they give us something, we go do the right thing, whether or not the wrong. And just being that person that everybody like. A lot of things that we do with MLT is, well, when I first got into MLT, we'd play card games to learn like different life skills for later on in life. I beat Fletch a lot in chess Connect Four. I beat Fletch a lot in chess Connect Four. And he gave me a couple times, but I'm still a big champ. But I got to say, me playing them games, it have helped me over time to think about my next move, think about my move before I make it, and really just planning before I act. But now, now we are dealing with horses, goats. Now, we're dealing with horses, goats, chickens. And I got to say, it's one of the best things I have ever done. Like, just being able to interact with something and caring for it and knowing that they care for you is just amazing. And I got to say, just being with MLT have helped me out a lot. That's really it.
Hello. I'm a parent of a student that's now in Warren Township. We came from IPS schools where a lot of the kids get looked over and you really don't get the attention that's needed for certain things that needs to be done. However, upon us coming to Warren Township, my daughter was struggling a little bit with getting things together because she wasn't overlooked. She had the radars on her. She did get kicked out of school and luckily, we had Mr. Taylor and Morehead Center to assist us with some things. And like he said in his video, you come for one thing, but you get something totally different when you get there. So initially, we came there for assistance with my daughter, with her behaviors, and getting her back on the right track. She's a good kid, but just made a lot of bad choices. So got there with Mr. Taylor and Ms. Ebony. I've had Ms. Ebony at my house at 9:30 at night and 7 o'clock in the morning. Like, she's been my rock. I can call her any time of the day. She's there. Mr. Taylor as well. He's mentoring my husband. He's counseled me. I lost my dad, then my mom five months later. So it's been a lot. But Mr. Taylor was right there. I've cried in his office. I've cried on his shoulder. I've cried with Ms. Ebony just because of the things that I was needing. And they literally bent over backwards for my daughter. She's now in counseling. She's done some programs outside of the facilities. Ms. Ebony has been doing mentorship with her. And then it just clicked for that people are really here to help. So we started pouring into her. Now she's an entrepreneur. She has her own business. She does hair. And she has a lot of clients at this point. So she's very busy. She does basketball management and weightlifting and everything. So I will say, I came to Morehead for behaviors and I left with a family. I consider Mr. Taylor and Ms. Ebony like a part of my family. And I'm very grateful for them. Very.
I would like to say Tayshawn left out the part that he's actually a Warren graduate. He graduated from high school in June.
Could I have my staff come forward, please? This is my amazing staff at Morehead. Ms. Regina is our new person, and she's doing an extraordinary job. And Ms. Brenda Mendoza is our new person, and she's doing an amazing job. And Ms. Tiffany, of course, and Ms. Claudia and Jessica is out ill. So, real quick, roll call. It's roll call time. All of my providers that came today, please stand. We want to do a quick call and response. Tell us who you are and where you're from, and we'll go around the room. Go ahead. I'm nephew. All right, thank you. Come forward, come forward, show everybody. So Dr. Rogers? Dr. Rogers, you can meet them at the door. All right, over here. Oh, wow. Brandon? Ashley? Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, the mayor of Warren. All right. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, the legendary Mr. R. Thank you. Ms. Cox? Thank you. Mr. Bartlett? And Ebony, my track champion, former alum of Warren, introduce yourself.
Hello, everybody. I'm, uh, 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 I'm,
The evolved proposal is approved. Thank you, Ms. Clayton.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is public complaints and concerns. Brian Simmsken and Ryan Russell.
President Dorsey, Dr. Hanson, members of the board. Ryan Russell and myself brought to your attention Policy Number 9130 regarding Public Complaints and Concerns for Discussion last month. And as you recall, this overall provides a means for giving due consideration to public complaints in a fair and impartial manner. The first half is dealing with public complaints against various staff, whether professional, supporter, administrative, and the means to address those complaints from the most informal level to the formal. And the second half, which Mr. Russell addressed, was regarding complaints against educational program, instructional materials, or school library materials.
At this time, we would ask for your approval of that policy.
Still moved.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
It is not a secret. I am opposed to a lot of the language in this. That being said, I think Mr. Russell and myself and Dr. Hanson, as well as the media supervisors, put together the best possible version of this policy we could.
Let's take a vote. The revision is approved. Thank you, gentlemen. Mr. Russell? Could you continue with the 25?
Yes, sir. President Dorsey, Dr. Hanson, and members of the board tonight seek approval for the proposed 25-26 school calendar. No significant public comment since discussion last month. Just as a reminder, some of the key elements to continue the process, which we will start next year of the first day of school, being for freshmen only at Warren Central High School, following the traditional, I shouldn't say traditional, following a similar pattern of fall, winter, and spring breaks with the conclusion of school being before Memorial Day as well in the future. Standard protocol for us is typically two years in advance. This would allow our staff and families certainty of knowing the calendar two years out. This time, I seek your approval.
I'm going to motion.
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion? Let's take a vote.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, Ed Martin, Walker Career Center sponsorship. Matt Parker. Dr. Steve Rogers.
Good evening, Dr. Hanson, members of the board. We've got an exciting opportunity tonight to do something new at the Walker Career Center. You know, Warren Central High School and Walker Career Center, as we often say, are the crown jewel of Far East Side of Indianapolis. We pride ourselves on providing outstanding opportunities for our students, and we have a new partnership opportunity that we're going to ask the board to approve this evening with Ed Martin. That's going to benefit the students in our automotive services program. So I'm going to invite Dr. Rogers to talk with us about the partnership.
Good evening, Dr. Hanson, President Dorsey, members of the board. Yeah, it's a very exciting opportunity for us to partner with Ed Martin and name our automotive program, Ed Martin Automotive Training Center at Walker Career Center, be able to license that for five years, naming rights, and provide our students a half million dollars of equipment, vehicles, training opportunities for our kids. And it's a very exciting partnership. They already do so much for us as it is. This is just a continuation of that. So we ask for approval of that tonight.
So moved.
Any discussion? Let's take the vote. Motion is approved.
At this time, I'd like to invite Kathy Harrison from Ed Martin to come up and present our first check, so. Yeah.
We're going to do a photo op.
Oh.
We're going to do a photo op.
Thank you, everybody.
(laughing).
I like the idea of the half million dollars' worth of equipment and stuff coming our way. That's pretty good for the kids. Going to love that. Well, moving right along. Resolution Number 62123, commitment to the state proficiency goals of 95%. Julie?
Okay, this is a resolution that came out from ISBA asking school districts to consider it. And since our goal is 95% down the road as well, it seemed like, reading through it, it fit our district pretty well. So we adapted it to us, and we put it out there for you guys to look at. Now, it has changed a little bit since it was dropped out there because we found out yesterday that ISBA is also going to support mandatory retention of our third graders. And we're not quite so sure we're ready for that yet. So we have added on to this, so I want to make sure you're aware of it, an extra whereas, whereas MSD Warren Township advocates for and is invested in meeting the needs of the whole child, including social-emotional development. And then we are adding a resolved statement that says, "Be it resolved that the Board of Education endorses comprehensive supports around reading but not mandatory retention." And then at the end of the final, "Be it resolved after assessment by 2027," we're adding, "while maintaining provisions for the whole child." We're just concerned about the school-to-prison pipeline if we are having 16-year-old eighth graders. And so we still agree that we need to have passage of the I read, but we want to make sure that we are tempering it with evidence-based research and stuff. So anybody have any questions on those changes? Okay, then we're asking for your approval.
I'd like to make the motion.
Second.
Do we get a second? Who was that? You? Okay, good. Any discussion? Let's take the vote. Motion is approved. Next on the agenda item is a discussion item, Warren Central High School block scheduling. Ryan Russell and Masimba Taylor.
Good evening. I am on the clock. I'm going to get us out of here, but I do want to spend some time on this topic. But good evening, President Dorsey, Dr. Hanson, and the board. I come on behalf of Warren Central High School and asking you all for consideration of Warren Central High School for the 2024-2025 school year and moving forward, that you consider a block schedule. I know you have seen this presentation. I want to take a few minutes to share simply what we shared with our staff. And that began with, "We need to change. We cannot be afraid to change." And so why we even went down this road was because we needed to figure out how we could support the needs of all of our students in several capacities. And so this slide here, just FYI so that you know, I was in Washington, D.C. with my daughter. She always takes us to these random places where she finds. And so we were exploring. And when I walked in, if you see in this picture, you'll notice they are desk. And so immediately, my education brain went off like, ooh, what do we have here? And this was a artist. His name is Hugh Hayden, who creates a lot of interesting pieces, but this piece was symbolic of the briar patch. Not sure you know what the briar patch, but it is something that within the African-American and even Native American community has a couple different meanings. And as I mentioned here, it's pretty complex. It's pretty layered. But what it symbolizes is just the structure of our education system here. And one of the things that stood out to me was that there are education systems that are dangerous and both protective when it comes to our students. There are education systems that I would argue even our current education system that many times, in an attempt to support our students, may sometimes stifle what they're trying to do based off of the systems that are in place. So as we look at what's best for Warren, the need for change, this was just a symbol for me that we've got to move forward. So we'll get to the brave, bold, and brilliant that you see on some of the team shirt here, and we'll talk a little bit about that. But I am going to move through this and really hit on some key pieces that we have. And so as we look at block, why block? That was a question people asked. And for us, it allows for us to implement an instructional model that allows us to do more than what we're doing right now. It allows us to actively teach strategies and to actually engage our students. So active teaching strategies that the students are up and moving, greater student engagement. They are leading. It allows us to do targeted intervention. And when we talk about targeted intervention, we talk about interventions for our lowest students and even for our highest students. So this is an opportunity to provide time to target those kids that are neediest, but those kids that really, we want to make sure that they're able to flourish and move forward. Creates a community of collaboration, more time for that, opportunities for reteach and regular check-ins, varying of learning times based on the learner need. Again, I can't emphasize enough, this is not only about the students who are struggling, but it's also about how we can really push forward those students who are excelling and provide them with opportunities beyond the classroom. Allows for college and career experiences. We're not tied to just out-of-the-building experiences. We have time during the day. And opportunities for students to take a lead in their learning. And all of this, within a block schedule, we don't have the constraints of time. So when you hear teachers talking, sometimes, "I just don't have time." You know, when you ask the question of, "When do you have an opportunity to reteach? When do you have an opportunity to look at the data?" Sometimes, time is more of our enemy than we like. And so considering a block schedule would allow us that time and that space to really engage with our learners. One of our teachers, because we have been entertaining this conversation with our teachers, and we've listened to their voices, and they posed the question, "But what need are we addressing?" And I think that is important because it's different than the why. The need is that we're wanting to increase student engagement and support. The need is for instruction to be driven by student data. The need is to provide equitable opportunities for all students to set goals, build relationships with adults, and the need for there to be space and time for exploration, exposure, and experiences. Time can no longer be the excuse for why we're not moving our students forward. We've got to create a space where the time is there, and we believe that block schedule would allow us to do that. For Warren, we have explored a couple models. We've explored a block eight. We've also explored an AB, which we consider an AB block, and that's our recommended block. You know, we've considered modified block, a four-by-four. We've considered a lot of different things and really taking a look at how we could realistically shift from a seven-period day to a block schedule. We believe that this one meets our needs. The student schedule impact would be that students would have eight classes total or seven classes in a resource period, four classes each day, and the days would alternate. The impact on a teacher's schedule is that a teacher would teach seven of eight. They would support a resource period with students. They would also be allotted 40 minutes of prep a day with an additional 85-minute prep every other day. One of the things that we wanted to be very intentional about was ensuring that we didn't touch prep time, and that was key. And that, in fact, when we do the math, they come out ahead with more minutes than initially or that they have currently. The 40-minute period that we are proposing allows us to do several things. It allows for teaming opportunities because that 40 minutes is the same across the board. So something that you see within our high school schedule, if you've ever worked in a high school, is that it's very hard to have a prep for all math to have a prep or all English to have a prep. It just typically doesn't work out in a high school our size. But within block, that 40 minutes that is allotted allows for additional collaboration outside of our extended day that we currently have. And so we're looking forward to that piece. It allows for some teaming, which we are talking about within our freshman academy area. It allows for additional PD. So we're excited that that space and time can be used for a lot of different things if we are to shift to a block schedule. Benefits for this particular model, more time for problem and project-based learning and hands-on activities. When talking to students, the classes that they really, really love are the classes where they are engaged, where they're up and doing things. More time for small groups, student-teacher meetings, individualized instruction, which is driven by student data. Less courses and transitions. And I have to emphasize, we are talking a little bit about hallway time, but we're also talking about the transition of one course to the next course. When you think about it, we've got our students, they are tackling seven different courses a day. And so by narrowing that down to four, it allows for some more intense focus on those particular subject areas. It also mimics more of what you see in a college life. So we talk about ready for college. You're not taking seven classes in college. Typically, you may have a class that's, you know, one day a week or only Tuesdays and Thursdays. So it's more realistic and resembles more of that piece there. And so we like that piece for this particular model. We also saw that some research suggests that student self-efficacy improves during this time due to the minimized workload, not the pressure of having the seven classes, the reduced anxiety, being able to focus. And that anxiety could come for several reasons. Could be workload, could be transitions in the hallways, could be a variety of things. And so we believe that a block eight would, in fact, alleviate some of those issues and enhance our student learning. Again, we wanted to see, so what are the constraints that we currently have? I don't know, again, how many of you guys have been in a high school with seven periods lately? But one of the things that we struggle to do in a seven-period schedule is pull-out supports. So pull-out supports resulted in loss of instructional time because when we're pulling now during that particular time, they're missing a lot of times their key classes. And the go-to is always to pull them out of the electives, pull them out of the performing arts, the things of that nature, the things that they love. So what you find is, in an attempt to help, we've got some resentment because the things that they're interested in may be the things that they have to unintentionally miss because of that extra support. Projects extend several periods many times, and sometimes with our students, that means they're not done or there are things that are missed. Limits the amount of immediate feedback and time for reteach. It requires teachers to sometimes choose between an activity that is engaging and an activity that simply covers the material. Again, time becomes an issue. Assessment overload. We've had students who say, "I got a test in every single class today." Again, so, and lessons are fragmented because I'm there and then I'm gone. And so lots of different reasons as we look at shifting to a block schedule and taking a look at our current schedule, we've considered what that means and why we would shift there. Jog, just FYI, you know, as I know that we are in the process of really revamping that, but again, the time that block allows allows for those opportunities to see jog in action. Okay? So to create those opportunities and experience through our instructional design provides time and space to involve the community with regularly enforcing our jog skills and bringing them in. There's a lot of intentional programming, so we're excited to see jog be more embedded throughout the semester, throughout the nine weeks versus just simply at the end of the semester when we're doing our final projects and things. So we want it to be more intentional and more engaging, even with our journey of the graduate skills that we are pushing. As we looked at that, we said, well, what, I mean, the sky's the limit. What can we do? What are some things that if we get this block schedule that we could implement to support some of our populations? I don't know if you know, and I put the numbers on there for you. Currently, our ML, multi-language learners, numbers exceed our exceptional learner numbers, and it continues to grow. So we're sitting at 483 sped and 534 for our multilingual learners. They are coming to us at several different levels. And I can admit, I'll be the first to admit, that we are doing our best to support their needs, but we really, really, really need to be intentional and create some opportunities. And we believe within the block schedule, we can build in some intentional support. So we have proposed a newcomer program, which would allow those students to, one, still be immersed in our school culture, but also still receive the support and gradually be released full-time out into our school population. We visited a couple programs, specifically IPS, that has a newcomer program, and much of what we've seen, we've tried to take some of that, some of that we didn't agree with, but some of it, and bring it back to Warren with the ultimate goal of really supporting. And so the newcomer program, as you see on here, allot for a lot of different things. Within the block schedule allows us to be intentional about where we place those students and how we support those students. And again, it allows for that pull-out as well as that push-in services that we did not have before. So we're excited about that, and I know you guys have this, and so if there's questions, definitely we'll be excited to answer those for you. I included in this presentation, and I'm not going to go over it in detail, one of the significant changes that doing block, we would ask, we would have to reconsider the time that our students are there. Currently, the day is 7:15 to 2:20. We would propose that the day shifted to 7:15 to 2:00 for our students. That's where that 40 minutes comes there. And it allows us to, again, provide that extra support for teachers, but it still gives the students that time. But the best thing, okay, not the best thing because academics are best, it allows us to add an additional lunch block. And that might not seem big to everybody else, but when you in that cafeteria fighting for your life, no. When you are in the cafeteria, really, I mean, we've got a variety of students that just don't feel comfortable in that space because there's so many students. And so we have tried and tried and tried to find ways within a seven-period schedule to, in fact, add a different lunch. To do that, we would significantly shorten periods versus extending them, which is what we need to do. And so this particular model allows us to have four lunches, which is about 100-plus kids less in the cafeteria than before, also taking in consideration that we've opened back up our media plex where students can push in there. We're trying to do some great things with some of our little cubby holes. And so all of that kind of comes together. I have my culture and climate team thinking about, if we have fewer students, how can we put activities in the cafeteria during that time to support them? So it allows us to be a lot more creative without the constrictions of time. So that's a great thing, too, that we are looking at. The resource period that you hear me referring to, that each teacher would support, is a resource period where we've narrowed down the focus so that, I mean, because me, I want to do everything. I'm like, we can go here, we can do that and explore. We've really narrowed down the focus to just a few things that we want to get really great at and still support our students. So the student resource time, which we're not going to call it that, sometimes it's called advisory, we're going to come up with some great name if we're allowed to move forward, is a dedicated time during the block schedule that embeds a structured time for students to do several things. Academic support, reteach, review, and makeup. Track academic process. More importantly, set goals and teachers working with a group where they will set those goals. Building relationships. In a perfect world, our students, if we can set it up right, will have that same advisor from 10th through 12th grade. And so you're building relationships with the students, you're building relationships with the families. There's someone who knows where you are at any given time. So we're looking at that again, that's a scheduling piece. Connect with peers and teachers. Intentional push-in and pull-outs will happen during this time. So that's the part where we say we no longer have to take class time to do that. We have a specific time in which we will support both our exceptional learners as well as our multilingual learners, as well as supportive students who are needing some enrichment as well. And then the other piece that I'm really excited about is really providing an opportunity for students who cannot participate in after-school clubs for whatever barriers are there, offering those clubs at least once a week during that club time. And so if I wanted to be in the chess club, as they were talking about earlier, and I just couldn't do it, or if I wanted to really be actively engaged in student council and I just don't have a ride, we are hoping to provide at least one day a week where students will have club time. And so again, it allows for an equitable opportunity for our students to all be engaged. We'll still have after-school, but again, it still allows for opportunities for students who normally wouldn't to receive and be able to participate. And so we're accelerating learning as much as we are remediating learning. And so it provides us opportunities to have those students who are in a position to apply what they are learning and out in the real world, exposure, more project-based learning, more student-led learning, more community engagement. So again, I don't want you to get just caught up in remediation, just note that we are thinking about students at all different levels, and this block schedule and this model allows for that. And just mentioned, our priorities for SRT would be student support and relationships, student academic time, and student involvement. So again, we're trying to be very focused. We may expand later if we're allowed to do this, but right now, we want to get really good at these three areas and really support students in these three areas. I've mentioned in here, student goal setting. So we've been really looked at, well, what does that mean? You know, people say that all the time. We have a strategy called "Win What I Need." That's a model that we would implement within our SRT time with teachers and students, where students are really addressing where they are, what they need, and talking about what they can be or what they need to support and what they need to do to meet those goals. And so teachers have said, well, what does this look like? And what we want is we don't want teachers kind of going rogue. And so for us, an instructional model that we share out, a plan that we share out, that we are very intentional with professional development, making sure that our teachers know exactly what it is that we're asking so that our students' needs are being met. Again, this goes into more detail, and I believe you guys have a copy of this presentation. I would, we just wanted to list kind of what the days would look like, please. At any point, if you have questions, let us know. The impact on curriculum, I think it's important to hit, it requires really for us an intentional shift in our instructional design. Some of the feedback we received from teachers was, "Now I got to redo my map." No, you don't have to redo your map because the map is what the map is. What you have to teach is what you have to teach is what you have to teach. What we are asking and what we are looking at is how you are teaching that material and what instructional design and method are you using for that? So there's a huge emphasis on using a variety of instructional strategies in our proposed 86 minutes that you can do now because you have the time. And so what we're going to be doing is refreshing our syllabus, we're going to be looking at our pacing guides, and we're looking at our instructional strategies and tools if we are able to move forward with this block schedule. We have thought even ahead, and one of the reasons we are bringing this to you now with the hopes that you will approve it, is the feedback we received from teachers was, well, what does PD look like? You know, as you probably know, teaching staff looks different. We have many teachers who've come to us from a non-traditional route, so they've not sat in an educational program, so we can't assume that the strategies are there. We've got folks that have come from the workforce that are teaching, depending on what area they are in. And so for this to be successful, we have to be intentional about the PD. And so we're asking for approval now with the hopes that we can begin to implement this PD plan of support next semester. So that is why we're bringing that now and hoping for your approval. And just kind of in summary, student impact and teacher impact, when we just narrow it down, for student, the additional class time allows for the reteach and help from the teacher and acceleration. It lessons become less fragmented with more time to complete things within one timeframe, allows for those student-driven projects and lessons, opportunities to collaborate, and it provides the time and space to explore and experience. Teacher impact, the additional 40 minutes of day of prep, which allows for teaming, collaboration, data work, PD, lots of different things. Fewer students daily to focus on, so allows you to really hone in on what those students that you're working with that day need, provides an opportunity for intentional touchpoints with students with the SRT, with the longer time within class, and provides the time to support students' learning at different levels. Again, the hope is that we remove the verbiage of, I just don't have the time, from some of our conversations that we're having regarding the academics of our students. These are just results. We did survey staff, and we were excited to see that we had about 162 participants. But as you can see on both ends, we got some that were excited, some that were resistant. I think, and I think we plan on implementing this again, that those numbers have shifted with the work that we've been doing in really involving them in conversations. Most conversations, I could say confidently, with most teachers are, you know, I had some concerns, you know, I'm still a little worried, but I'm on board. And so I think I can say for certainty that if we move forward with this, for some, you know, it's going to be a learning curve, you know, you've been teaching a one-way for a while, but we believe that PD support will support that. And then we were glad to see that, have you ever taught on a block schedule? We've got a huge number that have. We've got many who have went to school within a block schedule, so they have been a great help and a resource. So we're excited. We did bring a student group together for their reflections, and they talked about what they liked about that. Most of those students were students that came to us from a different district that had, were already doing block. And so we pulled about 30 of those students together to get their feedback, and these were the things that they really thought would enhance us shifting to a block schedule. So the one group, I will say that we are really interested and we just have not really touched base with them outright, just some parents who've heard have reached out or have given their feedback, but once we know what direction we're going, we really are going to rely heavily on our parents and putting out a survey to them to really get, like, what's your biggest concern? You know, we want to get a voice. And I, you know, I've had conversations with folks, it's voice, not a vote, but a voice, so that we can hear exactly what it is that we can do. Because we'll shift, and I think that'll be regular conversations. Once we know what direction we're going, we'll also do some focus sessions where we will present exactly what the model and the schedule would look like as well. So other implications just in general are up here. Most of this is within the presentation. One of the big implications is a 7:20 to 2 o'clock. Great thing about that is it gets the buses out earlier. I got you, Marcus. People are, you know, so that helps that piece there. The other great piece is that lunch, I mean, we don't do this for any other reason. Just kidding, the academics are there, but I'm just saying. I think that's huge, and you may not think that's huge, but that's a, that's a huge chunk and a huge lift during the day. And it really, after lunch, depending on what happens in lunch, determines how the rest of the day goes. So that's our hope that we can do that. Support teams, eliminating the core room, can't imagine 86 minutes and we have a kid who's late and they have 686 minutes. So we have started conversations about, well, what does that look like? Because we still need kids in class, on time, actively engaging. We really would look at the late work and makeup policy and how do you use 86 minutes to make sure the students who were absent have their work. Attendance, people are really concerned about attendance. I'll tell you that most of the research says if they were absent before, this doesn't necessarily change that, we just have to make sure we're addressing it. So it didn't necessarily hinder attendance. After COVID, it had the same impact on block that it had on a seven-period day, and so we just will still have to actively work with that there. Those other pieces, we talked about a little bit. Again, we're excited about this. You will see us, there's some resources in here too, in case you want to. But I said I was going to come back to the brave, bold, and brilliant. We need a model. Come on, come on, here we go. So I, you know, I went with the staff because, you know, you got, you got to give them energy and everything. It's okay, Alice, I got you. So for me, you know, many times when you're making the shift, you've got to have something that people can attach to. And so for me, whether or not we shift to a block schedule or not, one of the messages that I said to our teachers is that we need a change, and we cannot be afraid to make that change. So if it's not block, it's going to be something that we need to do so that we are intentional. I said, and we're going to have to be brave enough to answer the hard questions and make the hard decisions, bold enough to stand behind what we decide, and at the end, it's going to be brilliant. So that is all over things now. That's our theme, that's our campaign that we are really pushing. And what I really reiterated too, let's rock the arm, is the R-W-Y. And people say, what is that? At the end of the day, I've asked my staff to remember your why. You know, that's what it boils down to, is that remember why you decided to get into this field. Remember why you have chosen to work with youth. Remember why you wake up and come into the building every day. Because you know there's jobs everywhere is looking for teachers. So for you to come and commit to our students, you have to know that there has to be a why. And so this is where you'll see us rocking this. This is our campaign and theme for next year. And again, we're asking you to consider shifting Warren Central High School from a seven-period day to a block eight block schedule model. So at this time, I will take any questions.
What's ML? I don't have.
Multilingual learners. So our students that come in who speak English is not their first language, and so we have different levels. Right now, we have a huge population of Spanish-speaking students, Creole-speaking students. We're getting students from all over, and really laws have changed for how we can support those. But at the end of the day, really up until 18, we can take a kid who's coming from their native country, who maybe has not been in school, and we have to find out, find a way to support them. So it's multilingual. We used to call them EL, English Language Learners, that now, yeah, it changes.
I saw EL in there.
So exceptional learners is our special education students.
Why was it sped and the MLs grouped together in that one?
It was just to show you that there's a need to create a program that specifically addresses the fact that we have a large population of students who we have to support that don't speak English or come to us with limited English language. And one of the biggest thing is, it was a ploy to say, we're going to need more staff, Brian, because our ML population has less staff, but they're supporting more students than our exceptional learning staff is. So just to see, the reason there's a need is because we got 500-plus ML students and compared to what used to be our biggest group was our exceptional learners.
When are kids using that, or where do you use Edmentum? In general classrooms or is it in?
Credit recovery. So Edmentum at the high school is for credit recovery.
It's Play-Doh on steroids.
It's, well, yeah, they bought out all of that. They, Apex, do you remember Apex? Yes. It's basically, yes. Now, the good thing I will say about Edmentum is that it offers classes in many of our students' native languages. And so one of the things that we will be able to do in this newcomer program is present content and curriculum for some time in classes in that student's native language. So that has become a little more advanced than it has been in previous times. So that will be a plus. But for the most part, with the exception of some one-off cases, students that are in our building are using Edmentum for classes that they've not passed and they're retaking. Yes, sir.
Mrs. Taylor and President Dorsey, also with Edmentum, it's transferable now. So it used to be where a student was at a district, if they were on Apex or Play-Doh, Edmentum, they would have to start all over if they were almost completely done with that class. If they transferred to another district, that information didn't transfer. Now it's transferable, so it makes it more seamless for the students. And we also use Edmentum a lot for our waiver, our scholars that are on the waiver, which helps them be able to work with Mrs. Bush and Mr. Green, all of our coaches, in transition back into their school settings with their credits.
So you don't use it as like a diagnostic for a new kid who comes into the school system either from, I hate to say this, but indigenous?
There is other assessments for that.
Out of country.
No.
It's an academic, like, like she said, like a credit recovery. It's a way for students to acquire credits and not have to be like in the class. It's an online platform.
And then President Dorsey, there is already assessments that we are required to do when, when our students come in from other countries, that we use the WEDA assessment, as well as there are other assessments that we use as well that will do that. Now, if we look at Warren Online Academy that's using Edmentum for students who are first time, there is prescriptive, and then there's the other piece with there. So there's different ways. You can take a pre-test, there's all of that that comes with it, but that's a little different. But we do not use that to assess where, where our newcomers are coming to us with.
Would Edmentum be used in, in relations to the comment that was made earlier about this child who couldn't read?
No.
Would that be?
No. Edmentum implies that that, that child would struggle with that because that's at gray level, if not above gray level material, and they would need support for that. And I don't know that we would put someone who couldn't read, that's, most of that is independent work.
Yeah.
So that would be one of the main reasons why we would not.
Now, I saw earlier you had, you had core, getting rid of, yeah, there you go, eliminating core room, go ahead, go back, yeah, elimination of core room. What is that?
So right now, if students are more than five minutes late to a class, rather than interrupt the class, they are reporting to a different location that we call the core room where they work for that period. So with 86 minutes, I don't see, that is just not a viable option because they're missing out on significant content area and work. And so we would have to look at other deterrents for being late during that particular time.
Probably should know this, but what's your passing period time?
Right now, we have five minutes with an extra minute on the end if you're headed to the Walker Career Center, or an extra minute to leave early from the freshman academy. Did I say that right? Five? Yes, so really, yeah.
If a kid comes in seven minutes late to a classroom, he doesn't go to a core room because you're getting rid of that core room. Is that what you're saying?
Correct. And so we have to figure out what does that then look like, you know? So we're still marking you tardy, and then what does that look like? It even goes down to what happens for that kid that, you know, comes in or gets dropped off and they're late. So late to school versus late to class, we got to distinguish between that. And what happens if I'm 30 minutes into an 86-minute period? There's still a lot of good learning that could happen, so we don't want them not in class. So one of the things, I guess I should say, we don't have all the answers for that. We have tapped into our teachers to join some committees to really help. We have six committees that are working. One is focusing on SRT, one is focusing on attendance and tardies, one is focusing on the late work, one is focusing on like, what does it look like for that ninth period? Because remember, if we get out at two, teachers are working till 2:45, we've got athletes who we're not going to send home. So we've got a ninth-period group where we're trying to figure out, do we move everybody to tutoring? Is that in a time where, you know, our performing arts students can go down and work if they're after school on some, in the private room? So that is, we're asking for teachers' help to plan that time. Athletes have to do study tables, so we could implement that piece. We have Ms. Bush hopefully, working on that committee. Okay, okay. But we've got folks doing that, so, yep.
I just wanted to say, you know, I'm all about change. That's going to help our students do better. And I like your program. I like the fact that you got input from the students and from your staff. My concern is, sometimes we really need that input from those parents. And when we did our safety, we did a community where we met at a building and parents could come in after work or different times. Sending out a survey is okay, but you know, a lot of parents don't take the time to answer that survey. My concern is, is it possible, before we vote as a board on this, to get input from the parents, maybe have a community meeting, maybe more than one, because, you know, parents may not be able to make it to the first one? So if we can have more than one community meeting where we invite parents and say, hey, we're interested in going to block, this is going to affect you and your child, so we would like for you to come to the meeting so that we can explain to you, just like you did with us, what we're planning on doing and get feedback from you.
Absolutely. We can shift our timeline. We were going to offer one virtually, offer one in person, and also still do the survey. The thinking was, we didn't want to open up a can if it wasn't going to be approved because I, yeah, I'll just leave it at that, that piece there. But we can, we can move up the timeline. It's that my understanding that it would be voted on if either way by the next board meeting.
Well, would that give you time to have the community meetings with the parents? Because I would hate to vote on something and our parents haven't had an opportunity to give their full input. And there are a lot of parents that just don't look at those surveys. They probably, you know, working so hard, they don't, they don't do that. But this will, like our superintendent said, 10 times 10 different ways. Surveys are good, let's continue to do those surveys. But at the same time, as a parent, I would love to have a community meeting where I would have the opportunity to come in.
We will do what we need to do because our goal is, we want to start PD. So if that means, if that's what we need to do to get you to consider it, we can make it happen.
Yes.
Yeah, and respected that, we absolutely want to get community input for that. We will be bringing this back to the board the first week of January for approval. It's essential that we go ahead and get the ball rolling with this. We're committed to engaging families in the process and hearing their voice and getting their input on what this looks like and how we can support them through this. But this is absolutely the best thing that we can do for our students, and we will be asking you guys for your approval in January.
My concern is, you're asking for our approval of something that we don't have input from our parents. That's my concern. You know, I don't mind going along with approval, but it's too late. Once we approve it, then it doesn't matter what our parents say, it's already approved. I want to hear from the parents and give them an opportunity to have some input in this change because it's going to affect the family and the child.
Ms. Cory, I know Mrs. Taylor, Principal Taylor, it's a short notice to be able to pull together like a in-person community meeting, but as a happy medium, maybe, Ms. William, maybe we could get the survey out, and then at least that is out, and then after the meeting, we vote and then, you know, bring the parents in for further input. Because I just think, we don't have enough time to get the parents.
You're talking about four school days.
Yes, we don't have enough time for the parents. So we could at least get a survey out over break and everything. We can get the data back before, before our meeting.
I think the good thing is, the survey's prepared and ready to go out as early as tomorrow for that. I think they're also, I know in collaboration with the high school, they're considering virtual options that can potentially be initiated very quickly in terms of that. We don't want to shortchange the process of hearing from parents just to try to get it in before something. Again, our recommendation is, we're bringing it to you because it's our recommendation that this is the best thing for our kids, and I respect the need to get parent feedback on that. And I, I think. Um, and I, I think we can do both and respect all those processes. Uh, we just really ultimately, at the end of the day, the high level of support our staff's gonna need through this needs to, we need to be able to focus on that in January when we get back to move forward, which is why, uh, that timeline is the way it is. So, I think the answer is yes, yes, and yes. And we're just, it's gonna have to be an ongoing, uh, piece of feedback.
You'll, you'll donate. I think that would be great. And Ms. Taylor, I know you always send your announcements and make yourself available, so.
Yeah, and the great thing is, second semester, there's PD and they're still planning. So, similarly to what we d- did with the teachers, and we have those committees that are in place that are helping us finalize, there's a lot of details, there's still opportunities, and there'll be opportunities based off of the feedback. Um, and, you know, we got a lot of great information from our surveys, and so I know, I don't like surveys too much either, but, um, but, um, I think it will help us decide the direction and know what areas we need to focus on. So, that'll be the hope. So, that, that can literally go out. It's kinda ready to go, but again, we can open it, this up and, and see where those pieces are, and we can get that information to you all.
I appreciate that. Can I, can I ask one other question? When we come back from fall break, how far, how much time do we have before we have our board meeting?
Twenty-one days.
The third day.
We have how many?
It's the third day. We come back on Monday, we meet on Wednesday, and that meeting is required to be on that date by state law.
Right.
We, we cannot pump that back.
I just didn't know how soon our meeting was going to be.
We literally have four school days.
So, only four school days.
Yeah. We have Thursday, Friday of this week, Monday, Tuesday of that first week back, and then we are here Wednesday. And again, we cannot delay that meeting. State law says we have to have it before the 15th.
I mean, hey, the, the way, the way I look at it right now, uh, well, I feel like a distressed buyer. Uh, we got 21 days from today until the time, until, until the 10th. And, and we're just hearing this right now. My concern is, why are we so excited about this?
There was an email.
We understand.
A couple weeks ago.
Tim sent it out because he knew we were gonna have a shortened time.
Right.
That's why he sent that out to us ahead of time. He sent this presentation out to us ahead of time to look at.
Yeah.
Oh, I know he sent it out, but we, we still wanted to wait and ask, um, Ms. Masimba about these questions about, you know, having parent involvement. Um, is there?
I think we're gonna still get the parent involvement. It's imperative, and that was one of my questions until you brought it up. When I was, when I reviewed it in the email, I didn't see the parent input, but you fixed that, you're gonna bring it in there. And, right now, I think to kind of, uh, we have to move, one way or another, it's brought to the discussion, so we have to make a move on it, um, yea or nay. But, I think at this point, with the time we have, if we can get the survey out to the parents, at least they're aware of it, um, and even, I'm sure, invite some of them to be a part of the committee, to make them feel more, um, inclusive and, um, open it up to let them know, I know, um, what's the urgency? Because we need to get our teachers trained. If this is gonna pass, this is a big shift for them, some of them, and we need to get that training so they don't feel overwhelmed. Because if you have overwhelmed teachers, the students are gonna feel overwhelmed. So, I think the urgency is, if we are going to pass this once it's presented, is to make sure that we're able to meet the needs of the teachers and while integrate, and, and we will trust that your team will implement whatever the unreadiness is with our parents. Um, like anything, you're gonna have yays and you're gonna have nays. Uh, some are gonna be for and some are gonna be against, and we just try to work it the best way we can and show the benefits. But, at this point, four days, there's nothing else we can do.
Our, our teachers have been asking about this for a while. Um, they, they've had an inkling something was coming. This was explained to them in detail over a series of meetings, a- and they're stressing the need for PD.
So, you know, if we have parents coming forward that's saying, um, you know what, I, I, I just believe that everybody should have an input whenever we make a change. Uh, my concern is, I don't want parents saying, oh, okay, you made this change without consulting with us. I mean, I'm, I'm a parent. I don't want any changes to be made unless you consult with me, especially if it, you know, involves my child. Um, and I'm just speaking from a parent perspective that, you know, I just wish that there was some way, even if we just had one meeting, maybe if, if we can put out, okay, we'll have a meeting on that Tuesday when we come back. You know, just to give parents an opportunity, just to come and just voice their opinion. I mean, it would be just one meeting.
Gloria, we have Parents Square that this also can go out on, correct? And so, they're gonna find out that. We have 21 days before our next meeting, so therefore it gives ample time. They're gonna put out their survey, teachers are gonna, Parents Square it out, parents will get back within 21 days. Those are concerned. I would encourage them to co- make contact within the 21 days before this vote.
You can also put out a letter, a hard copy, for some of the parents who are not on Parents Square or, or not connected with the Parents Square, or Parents Square savvy. So, I think those are multiple.
We got all our parents on Parents Square now.
But, yes, no, ab- so, there's a couple things that can happen.
Ms. Taylor, can I, can I interrupt real quick?
Yes, sir.
Would, would an additional week give us the time we need? If we, if we push the vote back to January 17th, would additional week give us the time we would need?
We have to have a session.
I'm sorry?
We have a parent session.
To have a in-person parent opportunity?
So, we're having a special meeting.
So, we could, we could schedule works, we could schedule a public work session and take the vote there.
We, yeah, we were prepared for, in my mind, I didn't realize you guys were meeting as early, so I actually thought that the meeting was a little bit later, so we could do, we could do those things.
Do you wanna look at your team for head nods or anything?
They didn't walk out.
But, they got this.
Still here?
We, we, yeah. I, we can.
That was Howard, that was Howard's idea.
Oh, thank you, Howard, Tim. You know, that would be great. And then, that way, we could have a community meeting along with the surveys and everything, and I'll feel much better about our parents.
I think it's important to remember, though, that while it's important to hear what our parents have to say, I think it's more important to help them along the way if this is the way we decide to go. Because I think it, what's really important to remember is that these people are the experts. I mean, I, as a parent, when my kids were in school, I trusted the administration to make decisions that was in the best interest educationally of my kid. I am not an education expert. Now, I will have to admit, I have some questions that I'd like to talk with you about and some concerns, I have a husband that teaches, and so, he and I have been bouncing this off around each other a little bit, so, um, but, um, I think it's, I think the real important thing to remember is that while our parents may have questions about it, I think the important thing to remember is that we wanna make sure we're making educationally sound decisions for our kids based on, um, the evidence and, and the research and stuff like that, rather than just what our parents, I, you know, I, that sounds horrible to say because I'm a big, you know me, PTA, I'm a big proponent for parent involvement and, and parent engagement, and I still think they need to be involved and engaged. But, I think it's important to remember that we have a group of people that are experts in this area versus not, if that makes sense.
Oh, I, I don't disagree with what you guys are trying to do. Don't get me wrong, because I, I'm all for what's gonna be in the best interest of the child. But, uh, as Tim said, I think that would be a great al- alternative that will give us a chance to have a community meeting. So, we've resolved the issue.
Yeah, I think it helps us too, because the legislators are gonna come out with some potential law changes to the high school structure. So, this'll give us, hopefully they'll do that sooner than later. The session opens on the 8th, maybe this'll give us some time to process that as well.
Yes, yes, thanks.
So, go ahead.
I was just saying, to recap, because we had a lot of information thrown at us. We're gonna send out the survey, we're gonna do that, send out the information via Parents Square, hard copy, and then we'll have a meeting in person sometime that first week.
I didn't agree to the hard copy, but I, we can talk about that.
We need the hard copy.
We don't say nothing else, hard copy, so we'll talk.
Yeah, we need some hard copies for the parents.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll get some stuff going.
Yep, so, and then we'll meet in person and then we'll vote. So, thank you so much. Thank you, team.
Okay, sorry. Any other questions? Comments?
Yes.
Um, the first question probably more for Ryan. I know we shortened our day and had to get it okayed with DOE this year. How do we think that they are going to respond to 25 minutes shorter?
Yeah, we still meet the instructional minute, we did verify that we still meet the state-required instructional minutes, and it, as a reminder, I was just reminded, but, that and that time shortage is really a result of fewer passing periods. It's not instructional minutes specifically, it, that 20 minutes. And why that's critical for us is the common planning time is gonna be a centralized, critical element, not only for block scheduling, uh, but freshman learning center and some of the future work that we're doing a- as well to have common team planning time. Uh, it's, long story short, yes, we verified.
Okay. Um, more flippant comment, I say behalf of a whole bunch of parents that are just thrilled the courtroom is going away. Yay, go team! LaShawna's agreeing with me. Um, I did wanna note that when we were in Nashville, there were a lot of things I disagreed with that they did. I think block scheduling was one of the few things I agreed with, especially that ability to have an advisory period, um, those shared preps, that'll open up, there's a lot of power that we can unlock by changing the schedule to that. Um, and there's a lot of things that we can do for our students. You, you went over a lot of them, but, I mean, that was one of the things I very, very clearly saw in Nashville. And so, also, um, as a parent, I've had a kid who was in an advisory period at the high school. They do exist for small, tiny little subgroups. Um, and to this day, it's probably the most valuable class she took. Um, she didn't necessarily need all of the skills that were taught over the course of that year, um, but it really gave her a place to rest her freshman year, a place to connect with a teacher that's still someone she talks to on a regular basis. Um, I wasn't, and I'll tell you, as a parent, I was kind of suspicious going into the year about putting her in that for a year. And it ended up being really just the absolute best choice for her. It made a huge difference to her freshman year and the rest of her, um, high school career. It made a huge difference in her communication skills, um, both with her peers and with teachers. Um, and so, I think that there's really, there's a lot of really great things that hour or 86 minutes can unlock for kids. Um, and so, I'm really grateful to see that more students will have the opportunity to take advantage of that. Um, you, you already brought up the other thing, which is, we gotta figure out what to do from 2:00 to 2:45.
Yep.
Because that's hundreds, if not thousands, of students, um, depending on whether it is football or track season, right? So, we gotta figure that out. Because you're right, we can't send them home. By the time they get home, a lot of them are gonna have to turn around and go back, and they probably don't have rides at 2:30. Um, so, and I don't expect an answer now, just, I'm glad to hear that that was something you were thinking about.
Yes, absolutely. The great thing too, just to consider, is that the contract day for teachers and for our other staff that are in the building, that are in other roles now, is still the same. So, many of them, 2:45 or 3:00. And so, we have a pool of people, we just have to figure out what that structure, because it could go really well, or it could become a chaotic thing. So, we're excited to plan it and get as creative as possible with that time.
Yeah, and unfortunately, we've seen it go bad in, in fairly recent history, so we don't wanna repeat of that. Um, and then, off-subject, but I feel the need to say it, again, I wanna thank you so much for the town halls that you had with all of the students on domestic violence. I have been wanting that for many, many years, and I'm really glad, um, both of my students at the high school brought it up and talked about it. And so, thank you. I think it's an incredibly valuable presentation, and I know it is off-topic, but I did want the chance to say it, so. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And by the way, I love your T-shirts, um, Ms. Masimba, you guys look good.
Okay, now, um, closing remarks. Where did we go last time? With you? Did we start with you last time?
You started with me last time.
Yeah, okay. We'll come, we'll come this way.
I just wanna say, um, Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year!
We've covered a lot of things, but I think the central message is, we care and we want the best for our children. So, as long as we keep striving in those areas, I think we're on course. And second her, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
And I'm gonna ditto Kevin's response because I think the exact same thing. Um, I am proud to work with people who care so much about the children in this district, so, you guys have a wonderful Christmas, a happy holiday, and a great New Year.
Uh, Rachel, come this way.
So, um, I'm gonna say what I say every year. Um, those of you who work a 365-day calendar, take that week that you're given off and don't think about us, pretend we don't exist. Um, and for the teachers that have two weeks off, same thing. Forget we exist, enjoy the time with your family and your friends and just some time to regenerate and get some renewal and lots of sleep in so that you can come back fresh. And happy holidays.
Last month, I was not here. I was at the ISBA regional meeting, so I apologize for my absence, but I was doing boardwork. Um, just wanna say to everyone, enjoy your time. Um, we went to this, from the zoo today at the early learning, early learning, or early childhood center to the high school, just to show how much we care from the littles to the bigs. Um, to all of our families, to all of our staff, thank you for all you do and enjoy your break. Have a Merry Christmas and a wonderful New Year.
I guess it's my turn. I have to give update for, um, WAIF because in case Ms. Brittany is watching, gotta make sure I'm doing my job. Um, for Given Tuesday, um, WAIF was able to present a, um, $20,000 grant to our high school library. For Given Tuesday, we also, um, provided the district with 25 grants that included a variety of things. They were very impressed with the NOOK at the high school, um, investing in that and other literacy-based, um, activities. We also had our reelection, so, um, oh, myself, LaShawna, was reelected for the president of WAIF, and, um, also Ms. Nikki Gilbert with, is with Anthem, one of our community partners, is the vice president. So, WAIF would like to say, thank you, keep up the great job, um, and keep those grant applications coming. And to all of our staff, happy holidays, enjoy your break, please take some time off, close the computers. What happened? Oh, uh, thank you, Marcus. And to all the staff, the holiday, let me rephrase it, the biggest toy giveaway ever, that was Marcus' slogan, it was wonderful. Thank you for, everyone who rolled their sleeves up. We serviced, um, we had 974 parents, families that signed up, which that gave us, um, I think it was close to 4,000. I have not totaled the actual students, but they were able to get food baskets, um, we ran out of toys. It was just an amazing day with able to remove barriers and support our families. So, thank you, thank you, board, everyone, superintendent, our custodians, hands down, amazing. To Porter, they ran those toys back and forth and lift those boxes. Um, thank you, Kent, Justin's not here. IT, thank you all for letting us use your space, um, to count toys. I appreciate everything the district has done to be impactful and visible in the community. Enjoy your night. Good night.